My job.
There's all.
Yeah.
You know, you're a job to do, or are you good?
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at six oh two P M. And let's see. Can we stand to do the pledge of allegiance? Ready?
Of course, there is a flag in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
A Q. Oh, thank you. Okay, and can we please get roll call?
Alternative Commissioner Gutierrez. Is absent Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Here.
Commissioner Leal.
Present.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Present.
And Madam Chair Beetham.
Here. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to approval of the agenda. At this time, the commission may announce any items being pulled from the agenda or continue to another date or request the moving of an item on the agenda. Do we have any requests from the planning, from the planning commission? Anything from staff?
Chair, nothing from staff.
Okay, so can we get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I'll go ahead and motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
And can we please get roll call?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
All right.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Commissioner Leal.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
And Madam Chair Beetham.
Hi, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. This is for planning commission meeting minutes for June fifteen twenty twenty two. Do we have any corrections or anything that we'd like to add to those minutes? Okay, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for June fifteenth?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, and can we get a second?
A second. Commissioner Figueroa.
Perfect, thank you. Can we get roll call?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Commissioner Leal.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
And Chair Beetham.
Hi. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to written communications. Do we have anything? So.
No written communication staff has received.
Okay. Alright, so we're moving on to public comments. And the public may address the commission on any item of interest to the public that is not on the agenda but is within the subject matter jurisdiction thereof. Please leave me your comments to three minutes. Do we have any public comments at this time?
Then that staff is aware of, and I'm not sure through me when we.
No, okay, we'll give them maybe a few seconds, just in case somebody wants to raise their hand. Can you show us the list of attendees?
Yes. That's it.
Okay, that's it. Okay, okay, that's right. I was confusing him with the other. Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to reports and requests. At this time, the commission can ask staff for any requests if they'd like to see a report at our next meeting. Is there anything that the commission would like to request at this time? Okay, and do we have any reports?
No, we're reports from staff.
Okay. Alright, so we're gonna move on to our non-hearing items, and our first item is item number two. It's Coachella Sunline Transportation Hub. And it's Architectural Review Number twenty one dash thirteen. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you, Chair members of the Plan Commission. Gabriel, this is your Development Service Director. Have a presentation for the site. You tonight. This, this item was requested to come back to the Plan Commission, who was first presented to the Plan Commission earlier this year. And there were some recommendations made by the, by the Plan Commission. So, I'm gonna run through this presentation, Architectural Review twenty one dash thirteen. As you might be aware, that the, that there was a grant awarded for the transit hub, the total amount of fourteen point eight million dollars. So as a transit oriented development, one point eight million dollars was gonna be designated for the transit hub design and construction. There was also funding associated with the toll grant for sunlight buses, vans, street improvements, and housing loan for the Pablo Villas project, which is already a completed project. People have moved into that development, but hasn't developed yet is the transit hub that's associated with the apartment project. So the apartment project being a transit oriented development means the transit hub sometimes. This is a view looking south at the project site for the proposed transit hub. You could see the finished Pablo Villas project to the south. And then this is the street view looking south towards the Travis Street and the Pablo Villas. So the vacant site is where the transit hub is proposed. This is looking north. You can see some of the finished improvements in the right away, which includes some of the sidewalks that will connect north to the, the transit hub, and you can see some of the landscape improvements that completed as well. This transit hub will service multiple lines that would connect into Coachella. And so this, this transit hub will be an important transit center for the city. This is the perspective drawing of the transit hub that was presented to the Plan Commission previously. Since that time, Sunline has reworked some of the site plan. Mainly some of the improvements such as the bus shelters, which I'll present to you shortly. So this is the new perspective drawing that was provided to staff, and it shows three new bus shelters. Designed differently than it was proposed before. Before, it was this canopy, smaller shade structures over the waiting area for those bus riders. You can see here, there were a total of five smaller shelters. Those were consolidated into three larger structures that would be served here. And this, the, the street to, at the rear is the Mario Lascano street, and you could see the, how the bus services would circulate onto the site of Fourth Street into the site and exit back onto Caesar Travis Street, or could exit back onto Fourth Street. There's an existing retention basin that is there today. There's a chain of plants that exist around that retention basin. And you can see some of the onsite improvements. What was it shown is public art. So the idea that there would be some type of public art, like a sculpture that would be at the corner of, of the transit hub. And then there would be a curb that extends further into where, where there's an existence sidewalk along either Travis Street, so that would be another stop for buses coming along Caesar Travis Street. And let me just do a quick comparison from what was originally proposed to now. So, I mean, there are buses that weren't shown in here, right? That's one of the big changes, but the other, but the big change is showing the artwork. The, the bus shelters. What is also a little bit different here, it does show the fencing that is proposed. The sunlight does intend to maintain the chain of concepts there, but it would be painted and that they would install landscaping around the channeling fence, which would be Bougainvillea landscaping. And there are some modifications to the Sunline Transit Hub building that shown on this perspective that I'll go into a little bit. Previously, the bus shelters were shown as these high car shade cells that has changed just based on some of the recommendations that we provide at Sunline. And instead, it would be a shade structure as depicted here, which would be this swoosh shade structure. So there would be two large shade structures, twenty by forty. It would have a brown frame in desert sand fabric. There would be one smaller shade structure fifteen by eighteen, the same color for all. This is a perspective drawing that was previously provided to the Plan Commission at their last meeting. And this is a comparison to today. So what's the big difference? Obviously, you see the buses, that's the difference, but the shade structure has more massing than it previously did. So that's a little bit more noticeable. And then you could see some differences on the, some minor differences on the proposed building. This is a perspective drawing that was provided to the Plan Commission before. And it shows the, the sunlight building that's proposed, and this would be for Sunline employees. And then this shows revision to that building. There are a few additions that are shown. We have provided some examples of the public restaurants here at Veterans Park in terms of the architecture of that building. And we thought it would be good for this to reflect the architecture since we had it well designed. So they included some more foam detail. They included, there's a town mosaic that they were proposing before that would read Coachella Transit Hub. There is a new digital display that would be on the right side of the building that would have kind of a changeable copy for sunlight bus riders, information that's available to them. There would be a bottle filling station, as you could see on that side elevation. And they do provide kind of more of this art phone pop out features on that, that elevation. See that there. The site and landscape plan largely stays the same. There isn't any revisions to landscape or site plan that are posed. And so there were some recommendations by the Plan Commission for, for date palms. And discussion with Sunline. There was, there was concern about, there was concern about adding date palms due to the grant being able to fund the date palm trees. The grant wouldn't fund it. It would fund shade trees on the site. So if date palms were to be added, it would have to be budgeted, you know, either from additional city funds that would be allocated for, for the date palm trees, but they wouldn't be from that one point eight million dollars I mentioned from, from the state grant. These are the trees that were, are proposed without landscape plan. This was last showed to the Plan Commission, the last public hearing. So it shows the shade trees that are proposed, that there's a willow and Texas ebony, as well as the shrubs that would be proposed. Some of the, the amenities on site would be some lighting features that are consistent with the Pablo Vehicle Design theme, such as this and this. So this proposed on site, and we think that's a good idea to keep it consistent with the other lighting that you see in the downtown. This is a different landscape plan that is separate from the Sunline Transit Hub. And I just wanna give you an idea how this kind of starts to blend in with the transit hub. So there are some improvements that are proposed on the Mario Lascano's street that would be partially on the retention basin. So you can kind of see that narrow strip between the curb and where the fencing would be around the retention basin. So there are some trees, shrubs that would be installed separately from, from this proposed project. And that's part of a project that would extend from the Sunline Hub down to, to Fifth Street, and I'll go into that a little bit. So this is what I'm talking about, that there would be a pedestrian in bike path that extends from the, of the Fifth Street to the Sunline Transit Hub. That pathway on both sides would be landscape with trees and shrubs and ground cover. And this is the area of that location today. So this is not part of the transit hub, but it does connect, and so it's good to kind of see how that all fits together. This is the original Sunline Break Room Building that was presented to Plan Commission. This floor plan would stay the same. And this is what was originally presented to the Plan Commission in terms of the design. Staff did recommend some improvements to the, the design. Some of those design improvements were incorporated. But there are some design recommendations that weren't addressed. We did provide an example of this restroom building and just in terms of the design that we thought made sense to incorporate into that building to understanding that that would be a building that would be there for a long time, visible from Caesar Travis Street. And so I mentioned ways that they try to incorporate the design, which are some of those pop up features. So I'll go back here, so you can kind of see the little arcs with our phone pop outs. They did include some of that and some town mosaics that would be inside those arcs. And then it would be a painted base feature, so instead of this, these phone pop outs that are stuccoed. Instead, they, they would propose kind of a painted base, at the base of the building. And those are the ways that they would incorporate that design. I mentioned before, the chain link fence that's shown there on this picture. That would be retained in this perspective drawing that's shown here. So it would be painted a black color. And then there would be Bougainvillea vines that would be planted around the building. In discussion with Sunline to accommodate the wire fence that was recommended, and it's in keeping with the Pablo Vehicle Design Guidelines. The cost would be additional sixty three thousand dollars. The chain link fence is already there, so the preference is to maintain the chain fence. Now, the chain link fence is, is not allowed fencing. So, you know, staff would recommend that we include the, the router and fencing and see if there are cost savings that would allow for us to accommodate the water and fencing. But that has been presented by Sunline as a challenge, that it can't be accommodated with existing budget. And so I just wanna present that to Plan Commission, that that is, that has been presented as a budgeting challenge for, for this project. So we presented this as, we originally thought that toolers still would be proposed around the retention basin, not necessarily requiring the Bougainvillea landscaping. I think the Bougainvillea landscaping is proposed as a way to kind of mitigate the look of the chain link fence. And so I, I think with the original design, we intended if tubular steel was going to be added, you wouldn't necessarily need the landscaping. We do have some concerns about the Bougainvillea landscaping around the retention basin, just because it, for staff, it would be something that would be a little bit more harder to maintain and would create some debris. So that's kind of an issue that we wanted to discuss with the Plan Commission. We did present that it would be good to have a decorative design for the fencing. This would be more expensive in terms of the cost versus tubular steel. But we kind of want to present those options. The chain link, maintaining that on site, painting it, including the Bougainvilleas would be the least costly option. A little bit more costing would be the tubular steel, more expensive, this decorative fencing that you see at Veterans Park. Staff recommendation, well, one of the things I do wanna mention is the restroom that was mentioned at the Plan Commission is, is not proposed in this proposal today, and so I wanna make that clear, because that was something the Plan Commission did mention at the meeting. It is something that City Council also weighed in in, at a City Council meeting to put a restroom, but the cost to add that restroom would exceed what is budgeted for. And so that may be something that the Plan Commission, they want to discuss with the delivery on this, this item. But currently is not proposed as part of this project. I do wanna mention that the city did place an application in for the Transformative Climate Communities Grant recently. You might have heard of, of that submission in the Desert Sun recently in the article. And so that's essentially a thirty five million dollar grant. In that grant application, we did request funds to support the construction of a restroom. But, you know, obviously, we would have to be awarded that grant in order to fund the restroom. But we do wanna mention that, that the city did put an application in for those funds, because right now, as it stands, the grant funding couldn't be supported with the current rate of funding right now. Some of the other recommendations by the Plan Commission at the last meeting were to include date palm trees. And the cost for that would be higher, and the grant wouldn't support trees that are not shade trees. And so that's why we, I provided a radish sheet in front of you that would provide the option to remove the, the date palms as a condition of approval. You know, staff thinks that it would be a good idea to have more shade trees on site. It would, it would kind of reduce the heat island effect, provide more shade for pedestrians. One other example of a change that isn't shown on the plans that we think is important, go back to the site plan real quick. So along Caesar Travis Street, the sidewalk is proposed continuous to the curb, right? So one design option that's included in the conditions of approval is to offset the sidewalk on, on the northern and southern portion of the site, so that allows for landscaping from the curb and the sidewalk, and it would accommodate some shade trees in the afternoon that would provide some more shade for pedestrians walking along that sidewalk. Currently, how it's proposed, the shade trees would be on the east side of the sidewalk. And so in the afternoon, those pedestrians that are kind of waiting at the bus stop, they wouldn't have any shade from the sun in the afternoon, evening hour. So we thought that would be a, a good change to the project. You won't see it here in the site plan, but it is included as part of the condition of approval. The recommendation by staff is to adopt the resolution approving the architectural review. There are conditions that describe, including some, some potential design changes to the building. We're recommending that the building include smooth stucco, some boosted tile, sort of like the regular tile that you would kind of see commercial tile, that it kind of has elements of kind of a whole Pablo Vehicle type kind of feature, which is kind of the boosted tiles, and that's done with cement. And so we recommend that to kind of improve the look of the building. There are two changes that we're recommending. There's a radish sheet that describes this in condition seven would be removing the date palm tree requirement. And then number seventeen, same thing, it just says a combination of date palm and shade trees. So it would eliminate that need to include the date palms. But that, the landscape design would be shade trees. So this condition is in there because the trees that are on six trees are Chinese geometries in Hong Kong orchid, orchid, and so we recommend trying to incorporate that if we can. But Sunline also requested flexibility, not just to be limited to those two trees, but to have other options to be on those two trees. That's the end of my staff report. I'm happy to ask you, answer any questions. Do you wanna let you know that the approval of our, this architectural review is at the Plan Commission, that doesn't go to the City Council unless it was appealed by the City Council for some reason.
Thank you.
And I just wanna mention that the option is in the audit at Sunline, so that you have some of the product team that have been working on this project that could speak more to some of the design changes and why they decided to approach some of the design changes the way they did. A lot of that is related to cost.
Okay, thank you, Gabe. Do commissioners have any questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, so the five hundred and forty square feet, is that strictly the break room? There's no restrooms or public restrooms in that space.
There, there isn't. So it would be exclusively for, for someone to use.
I'd like to make a motion to go on record that, at least that we're you know, requesting that we put restrooms, public restrooms in that facility for the convenience of the community to have at least a place where they could, you know, use the services there. And then on the palm trees, there's a total of, there was three that we had, that I had recommended on the date palms. And basically, it's aesthetics, you know, it wasn't shade. We had three shade, so we had five shade structures originally, so I thought that that would accommodate the, the shade factor. The, the trees that are being substituted, what size are those trees? I mean, it's gonna be five, ten years before we could actually get underneath and get any shade out of those poor trees, you know what I mean? So, so I don't know how we handle that. If you offset it, add another additional canopy or because, like I said, those trees ain't gonna be, you know, most of the time they put them in, they're, you know, twenty five or fifty, I don't know what size they're proposing to put in, but before somebody could actually get underneath those trees, it's gonna be five, ten years down the road before you can utilize them for, for shade. So, so do you have the size of trees and what? You said that they want the option of being able to put down whatever tree they want to, and I'm thinking maybe mesquite, which is, you know, one of typical trees out here. Instead of the elm tree.
Yeah, let me see if those are on the plans. We didn't necessarily specify a condition about the size. And so if, if the commission was concerned about the size of trees.
Oh, I think it was, it was a money factor, and that fact that the trees are more expensive than, the palm tree is more expensive than the tree, so how do you weigh those two factors? You know, the palm tree, which is obviously would look a lot nicer. It's gonna complement the center divider there, and also the righted across the street. The date palms, I think it would enhance that area with at least a couple or three. And then, and then adding some, some shade trees to it.
So it looks like the trees are twenty four inch box.
Yeah, they're small.
So the other thing to also realize is sometimes when we have, when, when the box sizes is specified, sometimes the, the trees aren't that size as well, right? So.
That's a small tree, forty.
If there was, what we've done for landscape plans, if there's concern about the size and how they're planted, you know, you could request a planted size, so that's specified. It's a lot of times the box isn't gonna mean you have a mature tree.
No, twenty, twenty four, just one tree, thirty six, forty eight. I mean, forty eight would be, would probably be ideal that we, you know, a few years down the road, you know, people could actually sit underneath them or stand underneath them.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea to specify the, the size of the tree. You know, when we were doing the, we mean plant, you know, the, the planting, those trees ended up being small, how they were installed, right? There were certain box sizes. So, you know, if you wanna speak to that in the conditions, it'd be also good to hear from. So, you know, if you want to speak to that in the conditions, it'd be also good to hear from from the applicant on that, just to kind of see what will work for the.
Well, let's say we go with the forty eight, by the time you get in a forty eight inch tree, it's probably going to be just as much as a as a day palm, you know, so. You have to look at those and kind of compare the the money factor. But I don't know how we do this, go on record, at least that I'm I'm going to make a recommended. We have public restrooms there, hopefully the council looks at it and and takes that into consideration, obviously, if the the grant is awarded. You know, they've made a commitment already to do that, and maybe if we could stipulate that they add the additional three pumps also. Day palms, if they do get the funding, take somewhere they can pull the money out of the the grant. To put in those day palms or something, I think that would really enhance that little corner there.
Okay, in in terms of the grant, I don't think it'll pay for. I could be wrong, I don't think it's going to, my understanding it is was identifying the grant was improvements that could accommodate the restaurant.
Can we just make that recommendation and let them consider it, you know, I think that, you know, I'll probably say that the council is going to make the choice anyway, so. Let's put it back in their court.
Yeah, you have the ability to condition this project still, so just letting you know, just kind of what came back to you, but this decision is ultimately the plan commission.
And then the other question also, the building, is that a prefab building or is it going to be actually a state construction? It's originally they had talked about bringing in a a module, which, you know.
Yeah.
The the original proposal was actually a prefab building, and they were going to move it on site. So that obviously is is there's a big difference between building a foundation and and those module homes. So I don't know what the prices are or what what you're proposing, what they're proposing to do now. If it's actually a foundation, is it a prefab building again, five hundred, I think it's forty square feet?
The the proposed is a prefab. I know there were some comments. I I think Commissioner Gonzalez, you might have mentioned that you even thought that the restroom here might have been a prefab building. And then we were able to go back and find in the record that it is a prefab building, so it doesn't look like one, but it is.
The restaurant. Because my understanding that there was a big number of the architect that charged actually to design that, wasn't that one of the questions that was that came up? Originally, I would I remember.
For.
For the restaurants here at the Veterans Park.
Okay.
There was a question about the architect, and they said that you couldn't replicate those plans, they said, if the city paid for it, then why couldn't you? You know, that's part of the cost, you know, when you hire an architect is that you use most of the time you have for the control of those set of plans, you know, once you pay. So I that was what I had proposed, prison is using that same model to replicate as 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 that facility just changing the floorplan on it.
Yeah. And just want to interject real quick, if you could let Andrew Simmons in as a panelist too, probably in the audience. I just want to mention also our city engineer is in the audience, so he's he's been a big part of this project too. He might, he's probably been having some. He can probably answer some of these questions.
Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Yeah, I just want to say that I would rather have. The fencing not be the chain link fence, just in the long run, and we're going to have to maintain the boulevard, it's going to be the same cost at the very end.
The original plans had no fence, so is there a reason why they want to keep the fence? Yeah, I would. Because because if you look at the original plan, there is no fence, it's just the it's just the. It just, it it does become a hazard, right, because someone can run in there or you can have anything happen, but, you know. But and I think realizing that they would have to maintain the fence. Understand the cost, like, it's easier to keep the tuning fence that's out there, right? So so there's the cost factor, we're discussing it, the cost difference is sixty three thousand dollars. And so I would, you know, the applicant can probably speak to that the best and why they came up with that option. You know, I I think ideally for for staff, because it is in our apartment, so that fencing would be. Something other than chain link fence. We do think that the rather an option is a is a better option.
And I think if we keep the chain link fence, I would recommend that they actually painted to complement. You know, the surroundings canopy and, you know, you want to paint it black, I mean, but once you just paint it the tan color or the color. Yeah, that way it kind of blends in and then you put the bogan billias and once they're mature, you know, you're not going to see the big old black.
Those those are addition bases going to have grass or just going to be dirt?
It's going to be, the ground cover will be, uh, decomposed granite.
It looks like it has tile underneath. I've never seen a retention base with tile on it, but anyway.
So it'll be decomposed granite retention base.
And there's no plants inside, right?
No plants inside, I might have taken it, but they're not inside, but it would be around. Yeah.
He's a built a park there, so might as well utilize it.
So is the applicant on, are we, I think the commission has a few questions, so I don't know if they want to go ahead and answer a few of them at this time.
You know what, if if you could raise your hand, if anyone from the applicant team would want to speak. And so there's Brad and Jesse Prescott. And maybe a few others, they look like there's two of them. Chair, I don't know if you can see.
Oh, yeah, I, oh, wait, they they moved around right now. Can you go back to the attendees? There was a few that had their hands raised, but I no longer see.
It looks like they're on there, yeah, so Herman.
Okay, wonderful, I see it now, okay, so, yeah.
And Brad.
Okay, I see them now. I think Harmon, you went ahead and unmuted yourself?
Yes, I'm available, man.
Okay, perfect.
Is there any question I can, I can happy to answer any questions the commissioners have?
Yeah, I think the commission, Commissioner Gonzalez and Commissioner Lial. They had a couple of questions regarding the fencing, the date palm trees, I don't know if you want to address any of those.
Yes, I'll, yeah, I'll have our civil engineer Brad will answer those question, he's the all the technical question and the cost will be answered by him, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Good evening, Fishers, Brad and I have to go on seven consulting. So I I did jot down a couple of the the questions, if I miss any, please go ahead and and let me know. But the the fencing, at least around the retention, yes, the the initial rendering was. Void of the fencing, the intent all along was just to retain the chain link fences, it was installed by somebody else. The the proposal to paint it, and quite honestly, the the paint color can be whatever the commission desires. If that's the direction we'd like like to go, but it was in a an effort being budget conscious. To try to hide the retention basin as best we could by painting it and then also planning. We are, we are showing the boulevard, but it can be any other type of of vine type. Plant that might grow quickly and try to cover that fencing too, at least obscure the the view into the retention basin area. But a a lot of the elements that we've put in here, you know, as Gabe had mentioned, were. Were at the the max budget of the one point eight million, we're at about one seven right now. And that was an estimate as of a a couple of months ago, with so with inflation and construction, we're. We're concerned about where we're at, but want to make sure we deliver what we're showing, at least on on these renderings at this point. The the question, and it's a side question, but the the building will be prefabbed. The one at Veterans Park, it is actually both prefab and some custom features on it after reviewing the plans. The the custom features were the walls that kind of hide the entrances into the restroom. As well as a different roof, roof feature on it, so that is that is a a custom prefab slash custom building. The the tree sizes, yes, we are currently showing twenty four inch box. The difference between a twenty four and a thirty six, the price jumps. I believe about six hundred dollars a species to about two thousand dollars per plant. We we can. Add that into the bid as an additive alternate. So that if the, you know, if our estimates on everything else came in higher and the bids are coming in lower. We can certainly add a number of these elements, so our intent is to bid. The probably the the tree plantings, thirty six inch box is a typical forty eight would be. As noted by one of the commissioners, would be about the same cost as a day palm tree. Somewhere in that five, six thousand dollar range. As well as back to the fencing, we would have a detail in the plans for. Reput removal and replacement of the chain link with a metal fencing as an additive alternate as well. And then the 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 species type, we just wanted to make sure since this is being the the trees. Or at least the shade trees are being funded with a with a state grant, we want to make sure we're in conformance. With the type of species that will be allowed with the grant. Because we want, we want to make sure we spend the money and and are not rejected in spending that. So we're we're good with working with staff and figuring out what is the best species to plant within the site.
Thank you, Brad. Do we have any other comments or questions from?
Yeah, I would actually like to see the day pumps. And then what we could do is if you guys can isolate maybe a couple of spots for future canopies that, you know. That we could actually incorporate down the road as we get hopefully some funding for for those. And then also propose that we do mesquite trees, I I think the twenty fours is fine, those things are fast, you know. Once they they're rooted, they they grow pretty fast here in the desert. So. You know, that would be my recommendation.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Thank you. I don't know who TLG, but you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'm sorry about the name, it's Rudy LaFleur from Sunline Transit. And I just wanted to emphasize what was brought up in the presentation, initial presentation. Regarding the TCC grant and the initiative that the city was going to undertake. To add the restrooms under that grant because of the cost limitations under this project. And so just wanted to reemphasize that point.
Thank you. Any other comments, Commissioner?
No.
Okay. Okay. Anything else from the commission at this time?
So they they talk about the cost of trees versus the palm trees. I was just thinking about the maintenance of the trees, how much maintenance cost. For a tree compared to a palm tree, I see the punches, they are training only once a year, but the trees. What they do twice a year, so may maybe the maintenance is. Cost effective for trees instead of the palm trees.
So. I I don't know the answer to that question, I'm not, maybe our sitting here might know the answer to that, and and do you happen to know the answer to that question at all?
Can we make the recommendation to 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 add the countries and some of the additional stuff that we brought up the restrooms and? And then just let council decide on it.
Yeah, the the plan, yeah, so the decisions here with with plan commission were explained with our. Cost constraints are, but you know, ultimately that decision is going to be up to. Plan commission, now what it can be, right, like if. If it can't be funded, then there's possibility that that may not happen, right? And so then we'd have to come back to the plan commission and ask for revision to make the project go forward. So so that's why we have, you know, the applicant kind of explaining where are their constraints? You know, is there things that could be adjusted or accommodated? And ultimately, that's going to be your decision. And you could request that, that this, your decision won't go to the city council unless it was appealed. So ultimately, the decision is with you, sunlight is developing the product.
I think Andrew unmuted himself. Hi, Andrew.
Hello, um, so just to answer a couple of questions that have been raised. One relative to the day palm trees, those cannot be reimbursed by the grant. Whereas the other types of trees that do provide shade, such as potentially mesquite trees or. Other trees that have been approved by the arborists that we've met in the urban greening area, those are reimbursable by the grant. So any push away from trees that are reimbursable by the grant. You know, it's it's not just the extra cost of the trees, it's the cost becomes wholly. Nonrefundable through the project. So the the preference to the trees would be to. Encourage them to work with an arborist to pick trees that are approved, are approvable and reimbursable through the grant program. And if we could use trees such as mesquite trees, if those are available, then we could use that as a preference. But the, I would recommend having a condition be phrased in a way that. Trees would be picked in accordance with a pallet that is approvable through the grant process. Relative to the maintenance, I don't think there's any significant. Difference in the maintenance cost between a palm tree or a mesquite tree. But again, the main concern would be the upfront cost of of proposing trees that are not reimbursable.
Thank you, Andrew.
I think if that's the case, then instead of being twenty four, we should up it to forty eight, that way. At least are bigger trees, mature trees, and hopefully the public can utilize, you know, the state in a shorter period of time, instead of having to wait five to ten years. Do we have a mature tree where they can actually just in the shade space?
Andrew, I I I kind of want to go back to what you were saying, I'm I'm sorry, I'm not an expert when it comes to like the names of the trees and and. How long it takes for them to to mature and provide shade, so. But I I want to understand, so the day palm trees. Were not able to include those when it comes to the grant and getting the refund. Did you mention that that was because they don't actually provide, they won't provide as much shade as the other trees would?
I'm I'm not an arborist, but I I just know that that date ponds and palm trees are not on the approved list for grant reimbursement. So they're they're not considered a shade tree, and I think because of their higher water demand. They're also just, they're discouraged by grant projects.
Okay.
All right, maybe there's a twenty four inch.
She really wants the day. No, it makes, okay, it makes sense, I think. So again, I think we definitely want to focus to on. Also what we're able to fund and what we're able to, you know, to get at at this point when it comes to this. But also one thing that I think would be really important to focus on is remembering that we we live in in the desert area and it's really hot. And asking people to stand or sit, you know, even that shade structure that we're going to have, that's going to be on the hub. I think as much shade as we can possibly get and add to that area would be most helpful to our community. Because it's hot, even in, you know, times when it's fall or whatnot, sometimes throughout the day, it's still hot. So I think it's important to consider that, and just putting that out there for the commission to think about. I know sometimes we we think, and it's important to us as well, the aesthetics, we're very proud of our city. We want to make sure that everything looks great, looks clean, looks nice, but also just keep that in mind is it gets hot here, I mean. Just walk outside right now, it's hot. So anyways, just want to point that out to everyone and just keep that in mind when we think about what we're adding.
So that's, oh, sorry, Andrew, I was just that spot in specific is very much. If you go right now, you literally have this direct sunlight is still there, because the sun has not gone down the mountains at. Six fifty P M, right, and so. I think you just. In the spirit of the grant, right, you have to ensure that. You fulfill the needs and what the city has told the funder, we're going to do with this money. And so Sunline has presented something that fulfills those needs from the grant and is trying to be within those cost constraints while we.
And it's trying to be within those cost constraints while we want the aesthetical components. I think we also have to really look at what the grant. Is the, is requiring from the city to fulfill the needs, you know, on the, on the funding source. So that's really the key piece here. Um, and I think that's what, um, Sunline is trying to really push for, um, from their presentation with, um, Gabe's presentation.
And I, I would like to highlight one thing that, uh. Brad and they also brought up regarding, um, adults for the project. For instance, with, uh, removal of the chain link fencing. We could add that, or they could add that into the project as an add alternative. Um, so that. We at least have, we have the cost, we know that we would know exactly what it costs to remove that chain and fence, replace it with wrought iron instead. So we can still include that in the project as add alternatives. Um, additionally with the trees, uh, if it was. The initial bid was expected twenty four gallon and if we wanted to increase that to the forty eight instead. That can be also be an add alternative. So we would at least have. The price so that we have a point where we can talk about that. Uh, cause right now we're just using estimates, it's speculative at this point. But moving forward with add alternatives within the grant project allows us to have hard numbers to discuss that, uh, during the construction phase.
Thank you, Andrew. Um, I think.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Selena Jimenez, Grants Manager for the City of Coachella. I just wanted to convey really, really quick that, um. I appreciate all of your comments regarding the trees. Uh, the species must remain, um, the species that have been recommended only because. Uh, it is an urban greening grant within the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Grant. And so we are not able to, um, uh, introduce trees that are not drought tolerant or native. Uh, and that, you know, don't produce, um, uh, you know, like flowers and, and things like that for our birds and bees or, or what have you. Uh, in addition, uh, the California Natural Resources Agency would prefer that our tree plantings are fifteen gallon size. And the reasoning behind that is because, uh, apparently when you plant a fifteen gallon sized tree. Uh, the tree has more of a chance of survival, uh, because it'll, um, you know, just kind of. Uh, get its root roots into the ground and it'll just have a better chance of survival. And so for grant, uh, funding purposes, uh, they will take a close look at that. Um, and they will actually deny, uh, the reimbursement if we propose any trees that are larger than fifteen gallon size. Uh, so I just wanted to offer that, um, just as, as, uh, information from, um, the grant. And also the trees again that were selected is it's because of their shading capacity. And, uh, and they were approved by, uh, an arborist. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
So what's the timeframe in terms of, uh, being able to utilize that tree for, uh, for shade purposes? Do you have an idea on a fifteen, maybe we went down lower. Do you have an idea with how long it's going to take that to actually mature where, where our community could utilize it as, uh, as shade?
Yeah, it's going to take a little minute. Uh, if you guys are familiar, their urban greening grant on Grapefruit Boulevard, uh, all of those trees were. Uh, fifteen gallon size when they were planted. And as you can see, um, you know, you can see their progress and, uh, and it's been about. I believe probably about a year or a little less than a year that they've been planted. So if you take that project and kind of, um. You know, just compare it to, to this one. Uh, but as our city engineer indicated, you can use mesquite trees, uh, as part of the plantings. Uh, that is a native tree that is very beautiful and, uh, and will grow quickly.
And. Four trees that we used for the urban greening project were, uh. Uh, desert willow, acacia, mulga, and ironwood. Um, and a lot of those trees, it, it's been less than a year. I think it's only been about nine months. A lot of those trees, I mean, they've already almost doubled in size just since they've been planted. Those were all fifteen gallon because we were limited to fifteen gallon in order to get reimbursed for those trees.
Thank you, Selena. Thank you, Andrew. Do we have any other comments or questions from commissioners? Okay. Um, okay, so it looks like we've. Um. We've heard almost everything and got our questions answered. Um, would anyone like to make a motion at this time regarding item number two?
Why would I, uh, put it together, Gabe, if I could, uh, just go on record where we could, uh, we're actually recommending that we, uh. We incorporate some public restaurants, uh, on the new, uh, transportation center.
So Gabe, if, if we get that grant that we applied to, um, that it was a TCC grant, right? That the city applied to, if we, do you know when we would know if we are granted that?
I don't know when we would know.
Okay.
October.
Oh, October.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Selena.
When's the construction date on the, on the project, uh, the start of construction?
I don't know when the construction date would be, but I would.
Would be after October, would be after.
It, it might be. So I, I don't know if, if Brad, you're still on. Uh, participating in the meeting or, or just see if you know what the construction timeline might look like.
Yeah, I was just Brad and I'm still on, um. Right now with, uh, the, the plans have been dormant, you know, pending this approval and, and getting final direction. Um, so probably take us, you know, and we still need to go through plant check review through, uh, Andrew shop and, and the city. Um, so I, I don't believe we'd be starting construction before October. Uh, we, we would hope we would be, but it's probably late twenty twenty two by the time we're starting construction. Um, one of the, one of the things that we did chat about. With staff and city manager, um, i- if the city was successful, we'll work with staff on at least identifying. Kind of a footprint of where a restroom building could go. And to make sure that we did not put any hard improvements, uh, and or that we provided. Uh, sufficient services to where a future pad would be so that if you weren't successful this year. Um, you may reapply in future years and may end up getting funding in a, in a future year. Where you could put a, a restroom facility on the site. Um, and that it would be ready to go with power, water and sewer. So, uh, that, that is something that we'll always look at the plans. Uh, make sure we clear an area, um, or a footprint for that to happen.
Okay. Thank you, Brad.
I think what makes sense is to identify the spot and then just set all the utilities in place, you know, so we're water, electrical.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. Um. Any other comments or questions from commissioners at this time? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Or make a motion, uh, to stipulate the conditions that, uh. We didn't, that I discussed.
Would you be okay adding the, the, the comment wherever they, you know, they also add the. Alternative, you know, based on what the final cost for other items that they also have the wrought iron. Uh, replaced for the chain link fence and also the, um. Uh, what was the item that, uh, Nathan, uh, Nathan? City engineer recommend.
Andrew.
Andrew, um, there was two things he said. There was a replacement for the chain link fence. There's one alternative, one other.
The other was the size of the tree.
The, the trees have to stay fifteen gallons now, I guess, so.
And Selena, she knows a lot about trees.
Yeah, so that's the only, uh, maybe we'll be okay with adding that to make sure that's in your, in your motion. To, sure we get that, that wrought iron in there.
Okay.
I'd like to also add the, the pump trees, so if, uh, whatever the council decides you want to do.
I think that, I think Gabe mentioned this is not going to the council. This is here, Commissioner.
But I think there's going to be like an update council.
Okay.
About where the project's at. So, um, in terms of like the day palm couldn't be an add alternate under the grant. I mean, no, from some other source. So if it was included, that's how that would.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, well, it doesn't have to be included, but maybe they can weigh in and see what he said. How's that?
What do you guys think about these big bombs? Okay. Okay. Would anyone, uh, do you want to go over your motion? I feel like everyone. Kind of added.
Now to, uh. I guess I'll do mine and then.
You can help us, Gabe, with his motion, because we're everywhere in that.
Things from Commissioner Gonzalez that were, but one was the public restroom, but I started as a recommendation. So there's two ways you can do this. It's either, uh, it's like recommended if, if. Like funding is available or it's conditioned that, that the condition is like. The restroom has to be included, right? And so the challenge of that is if the city cannot find funding, then it's kind of get to come back to it, right? So.
To us.
So those are.
Let's just, uh, put it based on, uh, on, on, on possible funding.
Funding available. Yeah.
Available funding and if we get that grant, then we can incorporate that in. When they're doing all the, the great work and the infrastructure part of the project, it could actually. Identify a pad and then that's the future side of, uh, the public restaurants for that, for that facilities.
Yeah. So you mentioned the public restroom and then I guess, I guess that would be considered like an add alternate. The other would be, I think you mentioned the Commissioner Gonzalez is the deep bombs. So did you still want to include that and identify that as an alternate?
Yeah, if, if we find possible funding. So the council, we ended up, they decided they want to find if not, then, you know, pull the, put some money down the road.
So that's what I heard from Commissioner Gonzalez.
Would that, okay, sorry, just to, to make sure though, um. If there were possible funding for the date trees or. Would that remove then what we already have that would provide some shade and allow for that, like with that? If one happens and the other can't, the other trees are not.
That's already entitled money. I think.
So if we were to find the, it would just be an add on, right? Just in addition. Okay. Okay, then that's, that's good. That, that's reasonable. And it was also mentioned the fencing. Um, Commissioner Figaro, I mentioned the fencing, which is important.
And also the color on the fence, I think it's, it's important.
If they keep the chain link fence, they should do, uh, the match the color of the awny. So it looks like sand.
But if the add alternate is, is to, the funding is available for wrought iron. Would you want the water to be?
For it to match the rest of the, what will be out of style.
Yeah, I mean, at, at the end, that would probably be best, I think.
Well, that's, that's more expensive, right?
It, yes, it is. That's why they don't.
The runner? Yeah. So what I was saying, if, if that was the desire of the plan commission, just to see that. But, uh, included, if funding was available, then it would be considered under that all at alternate.
Instead of the, just the two, two.
Oh, yeah. If you want to weigh in on that. So there's the option of doing the tubular still. Uh, someone like Commissioner, you're referring to more of the design also, right? Color. In black, I don't know if you were friends with the design or you're okay with the tubular still.
Well, but at that stage, it's based on whatever of those two options become the most, uh, inexpensive for them to be able to proceed.
Either or.
Either or at that point. Yeah.
Yeah, I think, oh, we don't want to is for their project to be delayed. We know that our community needs this and obviously we don't want them to lose that grant. So, yeah.
Is there an expiration date on that one?
Oh, that's a good question.
I don't know the answer to that question, but, uh, for grants manager, Selena. Is still being called. Did you know the answer to that question? When the?
What's the question?
When the expiration of the grant would be, that's for, for this. Uh, something has expired.
Yeah, we're looking at like twenty twenty five.
Okay.
Yeah, we have. Yes.
Okay. So it looks like Commissioner Gonzalez went ahead and made a motion.
And you make the motion?
I think there was like some clarity from you.
He made a motion and there was input from everyone.
I don't know how we rewarded or.
Do you want me to, okay, so if that was a motion, do you want me to just kind of reward everything?
Yes.
Okay, so. The motion, Commissioner Gonzalez would make is approving the project. But that the public restroom, which would be additional condition. Be included as an add alternate. So meaning that if funding is available in the public restroom is added to the project. The day palm trees. So we can revise these conditions that are in the RADA that they palm trees. Would be included as an add alternate to the project that there's funding available to include them. And then the other is that the, the fencing around the retention basin. Would be wrought iron as a, but add alternate. Uh, that would be black in color and, uh, be decorative, uh, if the funding. Is available.
Actually, the right arm would, uh, Mr. You're also said that if it was, uh. As long as it complements the, 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 the canopies and some of these stuff around it. You want a black fence with, uh, the canopies or.
That's the chain link fence.
On the chain or either or, I think.
But I don't know. It's up to you.
I think, I think you know, you know, with the right eye, it would change, you know, are they? You have a big old black fence around them. They could kind of flow with it. What's being built?
Okay. Now, and that was it. So.
That's the motion. All right. That's the motion right there.
That's it.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have a second or a different motion?
Second Commissioner Gonzalez's motion.
All right. Okay. Can we give our call, please?
Yes, uh, Commissioner. With you, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gonzalez. Commissioner Figaro.
Hi.
Commissioner Liad.
Hi.
Uh, Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi. And Chair Bieden.
Hi. All right. Thank you very much to everyone, um, the applicants, sunlight and. Everyone who assisted with answering our questions for this item. We really appreciate your patience, um, and all the information. Thank you. Okay. So we're going to move on to, so presentations, item number three, we're not. Making any recommendations on that or, right? We're just gonna.
This, that, that will be a presentation, uh, actually by the applicant of this project.
Okay. 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 So item number three, presentation, Coachella Lakes RV Resort Update.
So Madam Chair, um, Nikki Gomez, um, Associate Planner, the applicant will be the one kind of spearheading this presentation. So be coming from their end.
Okay.
And we'll let them in and then they'll kind of start that off.
Okay.
Um, so just as a background, so, um, to, just to give the planning commissioners kind of an overview. Of the development that's happening there in the Coachella, Coachella Lakes RV Resort. Since we have two items also going in for that particular project. I think it's really kind of ideal to hear it from the applicant to see the progress that they're making and kind of what the development is. And so it's kind of more a holistic kind of approach as we are kind of doing this, their item as well as two of the staff report after this. And so, um, if, uh, Jim, Dan and or Mike, um, please, if you, uh, want to proceed with the presentation, thank you.
If you want to mute yourself, if, if you're giving the presentation, but, uh, it looks like the presenters are on mute right now. Uh, Mike, it looks like, uh, you can't hear you, but you're unmuted though. Uh, Mike, it looks like, uh, you can't hear you, but you're unmuted though.
Does staff have their presentation?
Yeah.
Okay.
I gave, this is John Rodriguez. I can probably present for Mike if he's having trouble with his. With his microphone.
Go ahead, John.
Okay. Uh, well, Madam Chair. Members of the Commission, my name is John Rodriguez. Um, I'm with High Tech Consulting. And F Russell Construction, and we are the. Uh, engineers, surveyors, and also the contractors for this project. Um, the owners are with us, Mike Harrison. Uh, and General Manager, uh, Jim German are, are here present with us as well. Um, so C R R is the, the, uh, company that. Is, uh, the owners of the project and also those who are going to run it, so, um. They had this nice PowerPoint presentation put together and, uh, to show you, um. Where the project is at today and, uh, where we are moving into the future as we get ready to finish up this project. Um, originally, this project was presented to Planning Commission and City Council. Um, in late two thousand eighteen, early two thousand nineteen. Um, we obtained a C U P for the project at that time, uh, which represented, um, a, a previous owner's. Uh, idea for moving the project forward. And, um, so since then, and since the COVID. Break and construction and things along those lines, C R R is now, um, the owners of the project. Um, and they are moving it forward to, to, um, completion. So what we wanted to do is collectively kind of show the planning commission. Uh, where we're trying to take this project to, um, address some of the changes that have been proposed. Um, and, and I'll, I'll preface changes with, um, they're all positive changes, there are changes that are. Um, making and taking this project to new heights. Um, I don't know the exact numbers as far as. Amounts of funds that have been dedicated towards the project, that I'd have to defer to the owners on that, but. Um, they're putting a significant amount of money forward to make this project. Um, you know, one that is, is, is high quality. C R R is known for their, um, projects and they. Um, currently have the number one RV resort in the state of Arizona. Um, and the Verde Ranch or the Verde Estate or Verde RV. Um, and so that's one of their, their, their premier locations and they'd like to make this one. Um, the same here in Southern California. So, um. Just a little background, um, and this will help you see kind of who, who C R R is and what they've been able to accomplish. Is, um, they are, have opened and run, like I said, uh, a, a premier. Um, RV resort in Camp Verde, Arizona, that opened in two thousand nineteen. And since, um, kind of set the bar for, uh, high-end RV. Um, establishments there in the state of Arizona. And, um, through that, they've gained and learned a lot about what it takes to put on and, and have a, a top. Uh, high-quality, um, facility, so a lot of that is what's going into, to what we're trying to build here in the city of Coachella.
Uh, John, feel free to let us know when you want us to move to the next slide.
Okay. I hate to say it, but I, this presentation was set up by Mike, so I'm just. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll kind of just go through. Um, and, and you'll have to help me out and just go into the next one. I'll, I'll try and prompt you if I can now. So this gives you a little bit of.
Can you hear me?
Oh.
I can hear you.
God, I am so sorry of the audio. I've been hearing you the whole time, but you haven't been able to hear me. My apologies. Uh, alright, so you can hear me now though, correct?
Yes.
Great, and John did a wonderful job keeping us up. This is Mike Harrison of C R R. Um, we're both the ownership and manager, and obviously you know John as the project manager for, you know, a long time of this project. Um, and as John mentioned, um, yeah, we're very excited to be participating with the city of Coachella with this investment. Um, you know, we want an opportunity before we get into some of the other agenda items. I know that. You know, the community's been looking at the project, you know, for a while to see, you know, what's going to happen. It's been a disowned property for quite some time. So we wanted to give an update, you know, and kind of what. We are planning, what the resort's going to look like, do you have an idea of the quality? Um, you know, that will be occurring as well. Alright, so, um, the presentation was being held to be.
Mike, Mike, really quick, this is, this is Gabriel Perez over here in the, the meeting room. Um, we took off the presentation. Do you want to share the presentation? Uh, from your side and drive the presentation, or we can share it on our end. There we go.
Thank you.
Great, great. And so I believe you have, I believe you have. Uh, copy of the. But I wanted to go through briefly a history of C R R. We have several properties that we manage in various areas, um, throughout the country. They're all hospitality assets. Uh, as well as residential and storage and commercial. Uh, so I won't spend too much time on, you know, the, the history of our company to look at that in PowerPoint, but what I did want to call out. Is the quality of our products that we are opening and developing. Um, the one we have in Arizona currently is the, uh, voted as the best park of the year for the state. Uh, of Arizona. We were number six in the country for USA's Today's Ten Best. Um, uh, our residential community was voted the best land lease community in all of the West United States. Uh, to provide you with an example of some of the qualities that we operate. Uh, we're a ten-ten park on Good Sam, uh, with our current park. Uh, which will be representative of the resorts that we're going to open here. And I know many of you are familiar with the area. You know, it was originally the Vineyard, uh, Luxury RV Resort. Uh, so we have taken over that development, uh, which was obviously a former abandoned property. Uh, you know, infusing, uh, more than thirty million dollars in investment into the area. A significant renovation improvement, um, you know, which we believe will be, you know, tremendous asset. You know, for the Coachella community. Uh, you know, some of the things that we're looking at doing there is, uh, there's an existing. Uh, golf course lake system. There'll be five resort lakes that we will leverage. We're building an eighteen-hole PGA-level putting course, uh, at the entrance. Uh, as an amenity for the resort. Uh, we will leverage, you know, fishing, uh, as well as pickleball, a bunch of spas. I think the high area's largest dog park would be five thousand square feet. Large clubhouse, two pools, uh, foosball, billiards, et cetera. Laundry, and what we think is important is best-in-class wifi, uh, you know, for the area as well. Uh, to give you an idea more about some of the putting courts, you know, the eighteen holes coming off what used to be. The, uh, check-in building for the, the golf course will be our, our check-in pro shop now for the putting court. Uh, as well, which will run down the western side of the property adjacent to the street. Um, food and beverage is going to be an important component of that. You'll hear later about our application for our, our liquor license. Uh, to be able to offer the resort, some amenities that, uh, is comparable with the resort's quality. And really what we wanted to convey is, you know. We are vested in the community. Um, Jim German, who is also in the calls, the general manager of the resort. He is on the Board of Directors for the State Association, um, about your hospitality. Uh, we believe that we'll bring over forty thousand visitors, which will infuse local tourism into the area. Uh, we'll employ more than forty full-time employees. Uh, you know, we believe that there'll be more than a million dollars in tax revenue the first five years. Uh, you know, from the project, uh, and we want to be involved in the community as well, uh, locally. And then at the end of the presentation, you'll see some of our values. Uh, you know, that we operate as a company. Uh, currently, we are projecting opening, uh, uh, early October. Uh, project is, is under full swing. Uh, you know, started landscape grading and landscape installation at this point. Buildings are mostly built. Uh, so we're in the home stretch now and should begin welcoming guests in October. Uh, so I wanted to just take some time again to, to highlight some of what the project is doing. Uh, what stages we are at, uh, and if you had any questions at this time that we could help with.
Thank you, Mike. Do commissioners have any questions?
I have a question. So it's open to the public?
The resort itself will be gated, um, so you obviously have to have a reservation order to stay at the resort. The food and beverages course will be needed to be open to the public as part of our condition of our license, but the resort itself is, uh, a private resort.
Is your liquor license here at some eight to ten o'clock at night? Is that also open to the public or is that the private part of your proposed project?
As part of the requirement for the bona fide eating facility, it will need to be open to the public.
Is it in the restaurant part of the facility or?
The, uh, clubhouse will have.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Thank you, Mike, for the presentation and John. There's no action for this item specifically, so. We're going to move on to our public hearing calendar. And. Um, it's a free, item number four, freestanding identification signs, and again, it's Coachella Lakes RV Resort. Um, whenever you're ready, Steph.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, um, members of the planning commission. My name is Siggy Gomez, Associate Planner, so, yes, before you today is. Um, the freestanding identification signs for Coachella, uh, Lakes RV Resort. Um, this architectural review two-two dash zero eight. And so, as part of the completion of this project, of course, identification sign will be a part of that and. Um, as they had mentioned, just to kind of give you an idea, this is the entire site. This is located east of Dillon Road and north of Vista del Norte, and this is. Up at the, the northern portion of our city and above us, or northern of us would be the city of Indio. And so these are the locations for where these, uh, identification signs will be, uh, installed. And this, just to kind of give you a background, so this, uh, development was, uh, came before you and it was approved by the commission. As Red Moon RV Park back in two thousand nineteen. And so this project is within the seventy-eight point three acre vacant lot, and this is. Are proposed, if, if you could see it, kind of around that existing Vineyards Luxury Motor Coach Resort. So there's already an existing development there which composes of a structure and the RV. Parking, I should say. So this is kind of built around that, and I just want to make sure and that this is separate development from that. So that this is being built right now as we speak around this existing development. So this is more of an RV parking rental space, and so this is a. Type of resort where you could rent each of these spaces and kind of enjoy the amenities that they would provide. Thus the clubhouse and, um, the structures that we were mentioning. So presently. This development named the Red Moon RV Park is now renamed to the Coachella Lakes RV Resort, and that's how we're going to kind of. Refer to it, and, um, as mentioned, it is, um, under construction. So these two, um, freestanding sign, um, uh, if I could direct you to S one, so S one would be kind of right at that corner where, where Dylan kind of bears off. Um, it, this is a twenty-five foot freestanding identification sign and S two would be the, a five-foot monument sign. Um, right at the entrance of the property, and this is an existing entrance to the, to the development. So the twenty-five foot freestanding identification sign is proposed to, um, as depicted here, uh, the kind of, uh, logo type. Sign, and so it is with the tree palm trees, Coachella Lakes and the RV Resort at the bottom. So the height for this is, um, overall twenty-five feet. With a seventy-one square foot, um, sign face. Um, to, to your right is the, uh. Night simulation in terms of their illumination, and so. This is kind of to provide a halo effect where the Coachella Lakes is type of a reverse, um. Halo sign, which the backing where the back, the, the light is towards the back of the, of the cabinet. And so around it would be like a neon, uh, outline similarly to the one at the RV Resort. But for the RV Resort, each one of those will be lit up as a lit, lit, uh, internally illuminated sign. So. On, on to your upper left there, that is the sign facing the, um, the developments. That will not be illuminated, so. Um, the illumination will only be towards the street to Dillon Road. The five-foot, um, monument sign, um, is, uh. Kind of a similar type of, uh, logo with the, with the, the identification of the development. Um, this will not be internally illuminated, so this would be externally illuminated, so you could think of it as a. Um, type of lighting, you know, uh, projected onto the sign, maybe two, three feet away, and so that's how this would be. Um, uh, seen at night, um, for visitors that will be coming in. And so I, I guess just kind of want to walk you through the development standards, and so these main signs were. Uh, es- essentially proposed here because this zone is, uh, considered a commercial zone. This seventy-eight point three acre site up here is, so they're able to propose this type of freestanding signs. Um, uh, it's required that all, all the freestanding signs are within property line and with, which both of them are. Um, that it is to identify, it's only solely to identify the commercial or industrial center. In which it's just projecting the name of the development. Um, and this, the sign, uh, the freestanding is not to exceed, uh, twenty-five feet, which the first one, that would be the maximum height. It could go, and that's where the applicant, um, build up to. The, for the monument sign, they could go up to six feet, but, um, they are at five feet. Uh, as, as for the face of the sign, the maximum is at seventy-five square feet for, per face, and so the, the twenty-five foot. High sign is at seventy-one square feet, and the monument sign is at fifty-two point five square feet, so. Both of those faces will be under the maximum requirement of seventy-five feet. And as for the illumination, so any applicant could submit into the city, um, an illuminated or non-illuminated signs, and so. The applicant chose essentially both, one illuminated sign and one not, and so that would be, um. The, that's the option that they had taken, and so just to kind of give you an idea that that, um, complies with our. With our development standards regarding signage. Um, and so, uh, with staff deemed this as, um, ex- uh, exam, under SEQA, um, class eleven, section fifteen. Three-one-one, um, under accessory structures on, on premise signs. And so, uh, staff recommends that the planning commission approve architecture review two-two dash zero eight with the findings listed on resolution. Twenty twenty-two dash twenty. Um, I'm here to answer any of your question as well as, um, I believe if a sign, uh, representative from the same company is also here available for. Your technical questions.
Thank you. Before we open up the public hearing, um, do commissioners have any comments or questions?
So both of these signs proposed are both single-faced signs. They're not, they're not illuminated on both sides, correct?
Uh, correct, so.
Five footer and the twenty-five footer.
So that, so the twenty-five foot high is, is illuminated projected to Dylan, but not. Towards the back to.
So just one side.
Just one side, correct.
Okay.
And then the monument sign is only external.
It's projected, is it?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Is, uh, is that an app, the applicant? Is is that an app, the applicant or who is that?
I'm with the sign company. My name is Doug Stevens. I just want to clarify one thing. The twenty five foot sign. Has faces on both sides. So it is a double sided sign, but only one side is illuminated. If that makes sense.
For the sign, the said faces, the street is a illuminated, is that correct?
Correct. That's the only side that's that'll be illuminated. The the side facing the resort will not be illuminated.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. I think there was someone who had a comment. So at this time at seven thirty one PM, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Do we have any comments, public comments? There's a translator, right? Okay. Oh, it was. I heard, I heard, I heard a. Oh, okay. Oh, I see. Thank you very much for that. Okay, so seeing there's no public comments. And I go ahead and close the public hearing. At seven thirty two PM. And do commissioners want to make a motion?
Show a quick question. Is this twenty five foot high sign is going to be visible from the freeway or is not going to be visible?
I think that the intention is is to that extent. So it's about, I think, three thousand feet away. Projected from the from the freeway, so. It would be.
During the day, but not at night, right? This is not going to highlight. Coming from the east.
Yeah.
It does have like.
One side is illuminated, the other one.
Yeah, but which side is eliminated?
The one towards the development isn't illuminated, the one towards. Street is illuminated.
That's correct.
Or you will. For the freeway.
That's my assumption. It's that correct?
It'll be visible from the freeway. I mean, I assume that's why they want.
Moses still a little higher.
Yeah, so I make a motion for staff recommendation that the planning commission improve architecture review twenty two dash zero eight with the findings listed in resolution number PC twenty. Twenty two dash twenty.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll go ahead and second Dr. Fierro's.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, can we get roll call, please?
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Mr. Lea.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Hi.
And Madam Chair VJ.
Hi.
Pushing tests.
Wonderful. Okay, we're moving on to item number five and same. They're sticking with us. So Coachella Lakes RV Resort and this one is specifically to go over. Type forty one alcohol sales. Whenever you're ready, staff.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission and Siggy Gomez. And so, yes, this is. Coachella Lakes RV Resort and this is for their type forty one alcohol license conditional use permit three, five, three. So just as a background, I forgot to add a slide, but this is actually a continued item. From the June fifteenth planning commission regarding the condition and so. Want to mention that. So yes, it would be in the same location over at. East of Dillon Road, north of Vista del Norte. And this is, and just I had mentioned the background earlier, just to kind of give you a context where we are now. And so. This is the type forty one alcohol license and this would apply to the reg registration center. That tiny little red mark up there as well as the clubhouse, which is the one a little bit further down. The bottom. And so the type forty one alcohol license is for sale of beer and wine on or off the of the premises. And so in order for you to have this type forty one alcohol license, you have to be a bona fide eating establishment. Like AKA restaurant. So you have to have a diverse type of menu. It's just can't be a to go. I'm going to pick up, you know. Packaged items and so that this the the applicant will obviously have to abide by this requirement. And as part of the type forty one as well, it's an on sale license, but they have the privilege to do off sale because the. They are a bona fide. Eating establishment. And so again, just to kind of give you an idea, so that so this is where our site is that that's the boundary. In north of us. And so for this conditional use permit, we we will. Essentially analyze it in terms of the proximities to these areas, meaning residences and. Into another on sale establishment. And so for for this particular proposal. It is within the seven hundred feet of residences over in the Dillon Vineyards Estate. So it is that residential properties right at the south. Southwest corner of the project site. And so and however, the establishment is not within the five seven hundred feet of another on sale establishment. So planning commission will have to make findings for this conditional use permit. And as part of that. Part of that finding is that this establishment essentially will provide some sort of. Facilities that such as a restaurant that's really not provided in this part of the city. Really north of the city and so they'll kind of provide that amenity to this area. Also, as part of the. The requirement is that the storage and display of alcohol cannot exceed five percent of the floor sales area. So you're looking here at the registration office and so it's identified there both in red and green. The red is where they're going to store the alcohol. The green is where they're going to display it. And so that linear feat. In comparison to the square footage of this area will only be the three point four percent less than the five percent that's that is required. In the clubhouse. This is where you you could. For the eating establishment. Similarly, those read identified in the storage and green for the display, their bar area, I should say. That only occupies four point three percent of the under the five, the under the five percent required. And the establishment is to not adversely affect the economic welfare of the nearby community. And so, as I mentioned before, you know, with the. The alcohol sales will be associated with this new facility, the clubhouse and the amenities that will come for it. And so for anybody that would like to visit, since it would be open to the public as renters and visitors were able to kind of. Gain some some, you know, experience that we we wouldn't be there in the first place. And so as part of that and as part of our. Conversation staff and applicant are able to condition that they are to go to a landscape maintenance agreement with the city. To ensure that the perimeter landscape along Dillon and Vista del Norte, all the common areas and parkways will be in first class condition. In addition to that. They are to replace any onsite missing or dead decaying landscaping on their perimeter of the site on Dillon and this is. To be completed by August first, twenty twenty two, which is their completion date.
August or October.
I'm sorry. October, I'm sorry, October first, twenty twenty two. Also that the structure of the proposed establish establishment is to be consistent with the exterior appearance of the commercial structures already constructed. So the registration office is already an existing structure. It is undergoing minor renovation to enhance both the layout inside and the exterior facade. And so right now it's. At the the photo to your bottom left is kind of showing you boarded up, but that is going through that renovation now. Probably close to completion. And so the new one, which is the clubhouse is that's a new construction. And so that kind of mimics the architectural style of the existing, which is the registration office. And so there's a continuance of architecture that's happening within the site. And so staff finds that this project is exempt as it is under the existing facilities, section fifteen, three, zero, one. As there's no expansion to the commercial use of the property or former use of the property. And so staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use number three, five, three. With the findings and resolution twenty two, twenty twenty two dash nineteen and the revised condition listed in the rather she dated July fifth, twenty twenty two. So that is an updated conditions that were presented to you previously, but then got updated. And yes, that is here to answer any of your questions as well as applicant.
Thank you. Okay, before we open up the public hearing for this item, do commissioners have any comments or questions?
So there is an eighteen hole golf course on the on the side, is that correct?
I believe that. Can I call into the applicant? Let's see.
The question, my question is actually, so the beer and wine license. Do they have access to the golf course also, just to?
So the the license will only be accessed to the facility. So we're only. To the register, to the registration office and the clubhouse. Could go in there as a visitor for your lunch and go in or take, but that would be where this license kind of.
Okay.
Ends.
I just, I mean, I'm just curious.
Any other questions? Any other questions or comments? Okay. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at seven forty two PM. And do we have any public comments? I see Dan, you went ahead and unmuted yourself.
Hi, this is Dan Kramer. I'm I'm outside counsel for Coach RV LLC.
Okay, thank you.
And are you ready for our presentation or are you are you looking for public comment from other people?
We we already had a presentation on this item. I right now we are looking to see if we have any public comments.
Okay, I can I can provide a little more insight on that the application if if. The commission is looking for it. Happy to answer any questions.
Do commissioners have any questions? On this item?
So this location is to be gated. And so when you're a visitor, since this is open to the public. How would that you just go to the front gate and go to the initial, the check in location or would you go into? A different kind of how would that work? Being that the the main clubhouse with the majority of the food and beverages is over to the to the end. So how does that, you know, work in the parking situation there?
Go ahead, Mike. I think you unmuted yourself.
Yep, so there is a gate at the entrance which if someone. You know, wants to come in from outside, they would press the call button and the. Registration office would let them in. We expect extremely minimal traffic from outside of the resort. We're not really marketing the food and beverage restaurant. Someone can come from outside the resort, but. You know, it's really designed for the guests. You know, to to keep them contained and provide the amenities, but that's how it would be handled is if someone from outside wanted to come in, they would press the call button. You know, just like any of the RV resorts you're familiar with in the area.
So from your comments, you're not going to encourage outside people then to really come into your establishment then?
No.
Okay.
Any other, so any public comments? I don't know if we can go to the attendees to see if anyone, okay. Okay, so seeing there are no public comments, we're going to go ahead and close up. Public hearing at seven forty five PM. Do commissioners have additional comments, questions, or would anyone like to entertain a motion?
Oh, hey, now I recommend the panel commission approve the question age permit. Number three, five, three, all the findings and resolutions PC twenty twenty two dash nineteen.
Okay, do we have a second motion?
Well, second. Motion.
Okay. Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Gonzalez.
Hi.
Commissioner Figueroa.
Hi.
Mr. Lea.
Hi.
Vice Chair Navarrete.
Bye.
And Madam Chair VJ.
Hi. Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Dan and John and everyone else who provided important information for these items. We really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on to item number six and. So development agreement for the Glenroy Resort project. And I see that it says withdrawal requested.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission. Here we'll put this again. This item was advertised for a public hearing for this meeting and the applicant, which is US REC Coachella LLC. Was applying for an amendment to development agreement for the Glenroy Resort. So they were potentially. Looking to to encourage the build out of the original project. Which includes one hundred and thirty resort bungalows, one hundred thirty room hotel conference center. And retail entertainment uses on a thirty four acre location at southeast corner of forty eight. And Van Buren Street. So the applicant. Since the publication of the notice of public hearing has withdrawn the request and no longer looks to proceed with. Modification to that originally approved development agreement. So there's no further action. The planning commission needs to take, but because we did advertise this for a public hearing, we did have to identify this on the the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, staff. We don't have to open the public hearing or do we?
My understanding is we don't. I just wanted maybe confirm with the council.
Henry?
Hi, Chair. You can open the public, the public hearing if somebody wants to speak. But if they speak now, then whenever it comes back to the commission, then they won't be able to speak.
Okay, so just to reiterate what. What they let us know right now is. So this item was advertised as public hearing and. If we are, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing just in case. I know we have someone in the audience. I'm not sure if they want to speak on this item, but just to reiterate what they let us know. If you speak on this item now and it comes back to the commission, you will not be able to speak again. So I just want to make sure that everyone understood that part so that we don't have any misunderstanding when it comes to that. Okay, so at this time at seven forty nine PM, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. And do we have any public comments? Okay. Yes, you can, yeah.
Good evening. How are you tonight? I'm not really like speaking against or for anything like that. I'm just trying to understand kind of where we're at at this point. I happen to have a property across in the Indio County area. And I was here back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, when all this was. Was proposed, I guess. So I'm just trying to understand. So are we moving forward with this? Building these bungalows and is this something that's going to be open to the public? And I'm sure. Kind of sort of these are questions you can't ask, answer for me, but. I'm just kind of. Wondering if this is not open to the community. What is this open to? And, you know, I had concerns the last time because of the lighthouse. Nothing went forward except the lighthouse. You know, and we have a park. You know, and we have a park. And I say we because I'm just part of the community altogether. Um, and then, of course, we have the school. So I'm just wondering, is this resort gonna be open to us per se? Or is this only gonna be an outside thing, kind of like what we just got presented for these RV? This is just for everybody else from the outside. And yeah, we need the money. But I I'm just, I'm just kind of concerned as to what we're looking at for the future for our children. You guys. Because I'm kind of on my way out in a sense, but, you know, I just kind of want to know what's, what are we looking at? So and is is it these hotels? Is that kind of what it is?
I think, uh, thank you for your concerns, but there's a proposal that uh that the county's involved in. I don't know if Gabe has any information on it. But uh they have a detailed plan of what and what they're actually proposing to do there.
Okay.
I think it's been funded by the state already, so I don't know what exactly it entails. Uh, maybe Gabe might have some information or Stephanie. She works for the county.
Yeah, yeah, because um the last time you had a meeting, a friend of mine called me and says, did you go to a meeting? I said, never got a notice about the meeting. So I didn't know that this project had even started to go forward again.
Okay.
I was like, oh, okay. So when I got the notification for this one, it's like, let me go figure out what's going on.
Yeah.
And then for your information, I'm sorry, uh, with the lighthouse, uh, we revoked their, what they call conditional use permit. So it's under appeal. So basically, uh, the council will make the ultimate decision on what what the future of that facility is.
I mean, I I get it for some things, but you know, it's it's just troubling in a sense. So but yeah, if you have information regarding the county, that would be great to at least know.
Yeah, absolutely. I think um so Gabe would be able to provide you or planner would be able to provide you more information. Um, and I know they're really good at connecting with the community. So if you give them your contact information, they'll be able to sit down and maybe have a more thorough conversation with you. And that way you can get that information because it is accessible to the public. Um, so they'll be able to get your information and and be able to have a conversation with you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your public comment a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, do we have any other public comments? I see we don't have any in the attendees. Um, okay, so at this time at seven fifty three P M, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing for item number six. And there's no action to be taken from the commission, right, Gabe?
No, there's no action. So.
Okay.
Just acknowledging that the uh proposal to the modify the development agreement is is withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to our informational item. Do we have anything from staff?
Uh, just maybe in just a follow up from the item that was previously presented. Um, we don't have a lot of information of what's gonna happen with that site. Um, you know, I did mention what the sector's planned for, which was kind of a resort. Um, and that resort would be open to the the uh public in terms of the customers that would be able to stay there. Uh, but there were were also commercial aspects of development that were uh open to the public as well. Uh, but you you may have read about um some county interests developing a behavioral campus there as well. Uh, and so we don't know exactly what's gonna happen with that site at this point. So this, what was on the agenda today was the development agreement to new the project that was originally proposed. And then there's the proposal out there for the behavioral campus. And so that's so that's all.
Yeah, it's it's not a secret. It's been on.
Yeah.
So, you know, whatever transpires, I mean, you just gotta basically just put it out there and then whatever information it's public, you know, information, they, you know, the public should have access.
So Gabe, whenever there's a trial like this one, um, people from India are notified that.
To impact report, yeah.
Yeah, so this this item, uh, so she was notified if if she lives kind of close across the street.
Yeah. It's within like a certain, yeah. Yeah, so they send out letters or whatever that may be. The county does that as well. Whenever, yeah, in like our unincorporated communities, we send it out as well, depending on what kind of project it is.
Yeah, cuz I mean, that's forty eighty bites Coachella India.
Yeah, and it's they're being impacted regardless. Yeah.
I think, uh, just stay tuned. Uh, we're not, uh, we don't, everything that's out there, you know, the public has full access to it. You know, we'll see how it transpired, but hopefully, uh, we'll do something faster. It's been sitting there for a long time.
Yeah.
So that corner is not gonna be developed anytime soon, right? Uh, just the one line, I think, uh, that creates a traffic, that creates problems with the pedestrians.
There there are street improvements are proposed for Avenue Forty Eight that uh are kind of in the works. I don't know the timeframe of that or city engineer is participating in the meeting at this time. Uh, but uh there are plans for that that were lining Avenue Forty Eight in front of that development.
That was presented at a city council meeting a couple of months ago, where they were gonna uh develop that whole street. Um, that'd be great.
Yeah. And then the what about the other corner across from the other empty corner that? Them on Van Buren. Yeah, so there's there there was a um entitlement for a market rate apartments. And so they have their permits for it, but there hasn't been any start construction yet, so. And oh, one other thing I I wanted to take the planning commission on is that, um, I think we had at least one meeting that happened last year in in August. But our our intent of staff was to um kind of follow the city council's lead and and try to go dark in in August. And so we just want to check with the planning commission if if you can agree with that. I think we would want the opportunity to to maybe call special meeting, um, if we needed to. But at this time, we don't think we need to have a meeting in August. Give the client commission a break.
I don't know. I kind of enjoyed this meeting.
I mean, if you need an especially.
I'm gonna be here.
Virtual ones.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Only virtual one.
Yeah. No, I think we'll we'll follow uh city council. Yeah, we can go dark in August. That'd be.
Okay.
That'd be great.
And if for some reason there need to be a special meeting, would that would that be a challenge for anyone in August? The month of August.
Not at all.
Okay.
I'll be more.
Get an idea.
I guess we'll see. No, I think we should be fine. Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, right, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting at seven fifty eight P M. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff.